We're going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the flag salute.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, as we approach Thanksgiving, may you instill in our hearts a sense of thankfulness. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together as students, faculty, administrators, and board members. We thank you for this year's successes in areas of growth. Thank you for giving us the time tonight to help move our school system forward. Thank you for the leaders who step out each month to publicly make the hard decisions that define true leadership. Thank you for our superintendent who leads and makes recommendations to improve the lives of our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you to our community for believing in our schools and voting yes on our last bond issue. Lord, we ask that you be with us in this room tonight as we seek your guidance and counsel in the decisions we're about to make. We are thankful and blessed to be here this evening, and we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Rowland. President. Mrs. Truitt. Mrs. Zimmershi.
Here. Presentation of the Employee of the Month and Friends of Education Awards. First, we'll start with Certified Employee of the Month, Jason Levitt, the Athletic Director here at Ponca City.
I don't know what to do. My hands. Sorry. Just like. Okay, that's fine. Mr. Levitt is on the go from morning until night for Ponca City Athletics and Extracurriculars. He organizes transportation, facilities, and events with a focus on students. He has developed systems to improve communication and to support coaches and athletes. Mr. Levitt does all he can to make sure the community, students, and guests enjoy our home events. He is the epitome of once a Wildcat, always a Wildcat. He is a former Ponca City athlete. He's a Ponca City High School graduate, and he is now dedicated to creating an environment to promote Wildcat spirit as our Athletic Director. Congratulations.
Okay, Support Employee of the Month, CNP Management Team.
It's the whole team.
Come on up. Our potato maker, thank you very much.
We love chicken.
Cheryl, she's the oldest.
Cheryl, you don't have to put up with that.
She is our longest-serving employee.
She is. They make no secret about it.
Forty-four years, by the way.
That's great. Isn't that great? What a great team we have here. I can't remember in the history of this district, some 31, 32 years I've been here, that we've ever honored a group like this. So, this large of a group. But we have Linda Turner, Cheryl Sutterly, Tamara Wallston, Kai Skudno, Randy Wilks, Jeannie Burns, Tony Hoke, Stephanie Gross, Seth Murray, and Mike Ross. And this is amazing group of people. If you don't have a chance to get to know these guys, they're wonderful, and they're great to work with. I'm just going to read a little bit about them. The Child Nutrition Management Team has demonstrated what it means to hold that line. For the past two-plus years, these professionals have met every challenge presented to them and overcame numerous obstacles to continue to serve our students and the community at large. Excuse me. Even during a worldwide pandemic, these dedicated leaders made sure that meals were available in easily excess to our community. Just to list a few accomplishments, they transitioned back and forth between onsite service and drive-through service at a moment's notice. They served outside in the rain, sleet, snow, heat, wind, and humidity, and that was all in one week.
Aye, super gosh.
Yeah. They worked extra hours to prepare packaged meals. They started both years understaffed and never missed a beat. They became very creative when product wasn't available, and it's still not available, and they're very, very creative. They made trips to Oklahoma City to pick up product for the next day. They stuffed thousands of sacks, serving both breakfast and lunch. They motivated staff, and this is the hardest part, when the majority of the district staff were working from their homes, these people came to work every day, and I only made them cry one day. And I apologize. They juggled in-person service and drive-through service at the same time. Finally, the CNP Management Team ended the fiscal year with a healthy, positive cash flow. I have no idea how that happened. Even though prices have increased and participation decreased, these individuals are true heroes, and we're very, very thankful to have them as team members for the Ponca City Public Schools.
You're here. Hey, Jeff, will you introduce each one so that our board members will know who is who?
Right over. Jeannie Burns is at the senior high school. Jeannie, raise your hand. She's at the senior high school, and she's the manager at the senior high. Of course, everybody knows Cheryl Sutterly, been in the district for a very long time. Started at the high school, was at West, and has been in child nutrition almost 30 years. So, Linda Turner is at our district office, and she is also in another department, curriculum, I believe, and came to child nutrition. She's been with the district for a long time. And then Stephanie Gross, she is at East, and she was at the high school as well.
At the high school?
No, I said you're at East, a soliciting thing. Tamara Wallston, Tamara's been with us at several sites, including Garfield and Lincoln, and she's at our district office. Tony Hoke, and Tony Hoke is at the high school, and she works with Jeannie and is a co-management position, and she's married to the famous Robert Hoke. So, he paid me. We have Randy, and she is at West, and she's worked at East as well and at the high school. And how many, what other schools did you work with? Those are the three correct. Yeah, that's it. Kai Skudno, Kai's has been with us for many years. He was in local media for a while and then worked at the courthouse, and so he is the other manager at West. We have Seth Murray, that is with our transportation and our warehouse. He's been with us, and he was also at the high school, and has also started out as a server at Woodlands. And then Mike Ross, Mike has been with us for many, many, many years, and he's always worked on the truck, and he's very dedicated. All of these individuals are very dedicated employees to Ponca City Schools, and I don't know what we'd do without them. We'd probably go hungry, so.
Me neither. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to get each one. I'm going to get each one of them.
We'll have you wait till one more presentation, and then we'll take your picture. Chrissy will do that.
Okay. We have Friends of Education, MJNH Fabrication. It's a pie partner for Washington Pre-K.
This is Owen Smith and Lane Fisher. It's not too often I get to present an award to my husband, and Owen is also one of our teachers' husbands, too. But that's not why they're getting the award. They do husband duties already, but they go above and beyond. So, I'm going to read what I wrote about these guys. For the past two school years, MJNH has been a valued pie partner for Washington Pre-K. Anytime we have needed funds for a special project, they've made sure we were able to purchase what we needed. MJNH has purchased bottled water and supplies for students, gas cards for parents, and meals for teachers. Not only have they supported us financially, but they've provided us with volunteers to help. And here comes, here's my little guy. They provided volunteers such as Owen Smith and Lane Fisher. They've donated many hours of their personal time to unload the pallets of water, reconstruct our basketball goals. They were really tall, so they made them small for our kiddos. They've made repairs to equipment and numerous other things. A major project that was done with their help was the relocation of some donated vintage, that's a nice word for really old, vintage playground equipment. The equipment came from the old Lincoln and had to have extensive repair work done. It was sandblasted, repainted, and installed, and thanks to these partners, our students are enjoying this like-new, fun equipment. We're grateful for this company and their willingness to donate their resources and their time, so thank you, MJNH, for your dedication and your continued support.
Thank you, guys. If you'd like to go outside with Chrissy, she'll take pictures. Thank you all very much.
Bye, kiddos.
Bye, kids.
Would you mind if I wrote it down there? Would you let me?
Hey, Po. Hey, Jagger.
Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Hey, Lane.
Thank you.
Again. I had to have taken hours and hours to do that.
You know that's Jared's brother.
I would have never known.
Since I've seen him.
Okay, any public comment this evening? Nope? Okay. We'll move on to four. Reports with potential board discussion. We're here with ACT Testing Spring 2020. Betsy, Ms. Easley, would you please?
Okay, so every year, the state is required, the state requires us as a district to choose the test that we're going to use for our state testing. We have the choice of ACT or SAT, and so they require us to go through this process every year, speaking with students, parents, faculty, and administration to decide which test is best for our school district. So, we did this this year in two ways. We set up a test selection committee made up of parents, students, teachers, and administrators, and we also sent out a survey to all the juniors and all of their parents. So, we discussed, well, sorry, we had our two parents there, Isella Aguilar and Don Bohan, and our two teachers from the high school, Jill Kleinen and Pierre Mousboudi. Our administrators were Mr. Dent and Mr. Tagliotella. We communicated a few years back when life was normal. We met and face-to-face and had a regular, old-fashioned meeting. This year, we did that via email to keep visitors out of the high school. We're still trying to limit that. So, these are the things that we talked about, these bullet points. I'm not going to read them, but I'll just kind of give you a quick summary. The high school's curriculum is centered around the Oklahoma academic standards as well as ACT's college and career readiness standards. All of our curriculum in the high school are focused on those two sets of standards. We have invested a significant amount of time and money over the years, giving teachers time to work on curriculum planning and curriculum alignment so that we can be meeting the needs of both of those sets of standards. We, for many years, had a standalone ACT prep course at the high school. I would say, over the years, we probably ran through 1,200 kids, maybe, or more through that class, and we had great success. The problem was, of course, that only a relative handful of kids could fit that class into their schedule for a whole semester. And so, we were really working on ways to integrate ACT prep intentionally into our curriculum. I mean, all of our content areas are getting kids ready for testing on that ACT, but we wanted to do some intentional ACT prep. And so, now, we have moved from that standalone ACT prep class to using ACT prep across the board in our classes, specifically in English and math through the use of our Reading Plus program and our IXL program. And in English and math, the creation of standards-based benchmarks connected to the OAS and the CCRS to make sure that our kids are hitting the mark and ready for when they take that ACT. We don't want any of that information on the test to be new to them when they see that. A majority of our kids take the ACT for admissions over the SAT. Most local, I would say statewide colleges, take the ACT, and so if kids are headed to Baylor or Rice, they may have to take the SAT for admission. Those are few, a handful of students, really, who are not able to use the ACT. And starting next year, Pohai will be a test center again for the SAT. We will be this year for the ACT, and then we'll pick that up again next year. We stopped doing that during COVID because we didn't need, you know, visitors in the building. So, we feel like we've got kids covered both ways there. Finally, our teachers and staff are very familiar with the ACT test format. They know what parts of their content are tested on that ACT, and they're really skilled at helping the kids break down those tasks and be able to achieve when they take the test. Also, both freshmen and sophomores take a pre-ACT this year. The sophomores, in fact, next week are going to be taking the pre-ACT as their practice year. We use that practice, obviously, for straightforward practice on the ACT, but also to inform our curriculum. It's going to be really important for the next couple of years while we make up the gaps that we have as a result of COVID. Both our students and our parents' representatives expressed that they were all focused on the ACT rather than the SAT. I didn't find a single student on their responses to our survey that wanted the SAT instead of the ACT. They were all supportive of that. We also considered local opportunities for our students in terms of local and state scholarships. People who are on those selection committees understand the ACT, they understand the scoring, and therefore, they understand what a good score is, what a not-so-good score is. The SAT is a different format entirely, scoring and test-wise, and we're just unfamiliar with that in this area. And so, based on all of that discussion, everyone was in agreement that the ACT is best for our needs at this point. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you use any of the resources from College Board at all?
Well, College Board is the SAT, and so we do use some of those. We use College Board a lot with our AP courses and our pre-AP courses. That's kind of the center there. ACT does have a plethora of resources on their ACT website, and we do use that for practice.
I wondered if they were starting, they used some of those things in the Wildcat Way classes at all?
We had, yes. The one thing that we have seen that makes the most impact, and as the person who taught that standalone ACT prep course with Kim White for probably close to 20 years, the one thing that we see over and over and over again that makes the most difference for kids on the ACT is reading. If we can improve a kid's reading skills, we can improve academic performance across the board as well as an improved life after high school. We have an alarming number of adults and students in our community that are functionally illiterate. They can read street signs, they can, you know, read like a menu, but really beyond that is difficult for them. And my personal goal as an educator is not to graduate kids who can't take care of their business in real life after. I want our kids to be able to read their rent agreement or understand their car lease, you know? I mean, those are real basic skills that a lot of us take for granted. So, we know that improving their reading score can improve everything for them. So, we've had some great success with our Reading Plus, which I'm sure I'll talk about later. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Easley. You are welcome. And one of the things that we're going to talk about in the superintendent's report are our ACT testing results. Remember, we did not take the ACT year before last due to COVID. No one in the state did. So, there's several things to talk about is our ACT achievement of graduates 2021. Here's how our scores stacked up in comparison to the state, and one thing that I want to tell you is the ACT test is the state testing program for our juniors. So, the state did not have, it's required that 95% of kids test for state testing, and in our state testing alone, I think our percentages were way down. Now, in Ponca City, our percentages were really high, but next month, I'm going to be reporting on state testing other than our juniors, and there's not even a state comparison because there are some schools that not even 50% of the students tested. It was required that 95%. There wasn't a penalty due to COVID. So, comparatively, we had a lot of kids test, and I'm not sure there were 95% of the kids test. Betsy Delanna, do you know?
Statewide.
Statewide, if 95% of the kids tested? Okay. The numbers were down as far as the last time the test was taken. We were below the state average in English, 16.1, and I'll show you some historical data. We were out, an English teacher, most of the semester last year due to some health issues. So, we struggled in staffing a bit last year in English and math. We were above the state average. Reading, we were even with the state average, and two years ago, you'll remember, we implemented Reading Plus, and we made some headway the last time we took testing in reading, the ACT, but we dipped just a bit this year. Science, we were 1/10 of a point above the state average, and composite, I mean, we were just below the state average at 17.6. That's in all core subjects. Here are our five-year trends, and if you'll notice, I have the 1617 school year highlighted over on the left in green. That was just before the ACT became the state test. That was when just our college-bound students took the ACT, and we were above the state average all the way across the board when it was just our college-bound students. And then, when it became required for 95% of our students, we dipped down the first year in 1718, dipped down in English, stayed even within two points. I called it staying even with math. Reading, we dipped down below two point, below 2/10 of a point. Science, we stayed within 2/10, and our composite was down a half a point. So, that first year was really kind of hard on us, and then we started putting some growth measures in place. In 1819, we made some progress in English, but we were still below the state average. Mathematics, we were above the state average. Reading, we made a huge jump. In the 1819 year was the year that we implemented Reading Plus, so there was some growth there. Science, above the state average, and composite, within 2/10 of a point of the state average. Then, in 1920, there was no testing due to the pandemic, no statewide testing. Last year, 2021, we probably experienced tens of thousands of quarantines. So, we didn't have students in the building at the same time for any given time, and again, we had some staffing issues in English. We did dip down a little further in English, 16.1, so we're 6/10 of a point off the state average in English. In math, we're still above the state average. Reading, even. We did lose some of our headway in reading, but we've made some changes this year from the 2021 as far as our Reading Plus implementation. Science, above the mark, and composite, just within 1/10 of a point. So, those are our five-year trends as far as state testing goes or as ACT testing goes. And so, I want to talk to you about some action steps for.
One minute.
Okay?
Go back to previous slide.
One more.
If I'm reading that correctly, 2020 to 2021, with staffing issues and distance learning, was across the board lower than in every category than 2018 and 2019.
No, we were above in math and above in science. They're color-coded in green.
No. No, in 2019, it's 17.8.
2018, 2019 year.
Distance learning is not as good as in-person learning, is what it tells me.
That's exactly right.
I mean, we're down in every category.
You mean from 1819? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, from our previous scores, not from the state scores.
I did our scores.
Yes, down in every category.
So, distance learning, obviously, is not as good as in-person learning.
Oh, I can promise you that, across the board.
Basically, we've down in two years. It's going to take us four years to get back above it?
It's going to take a lot of recovery. We're going to have to recover with our social-emotional learning, with our.
But is that statewide or is that just us?
Pretty much statewide.
Oh, I mean, look at the composites they've gone down to.
Yeah, you can look at the statewide.
States have gone down, too. I'd like to know what they're going to, I mean, I'd like to know what, as a state, we're going to do to bring up a 17.7 composite score. I mean, isn't that way below average for an ACT score?
It's pretty, right, but.
Another question for either Betsy or you. Don't most colleges require a 19 or higher, or you have to take remediation courses?
Yeah.
So, 19 or higher in math and in English, but Delana can speak to, they do something kind of wacko on science and reading. The college remediation rates, the college remediation is dependent upon the college they're going to, so what they get remediated in, based on what scores in what areas. And they kind of went a little bit lax on that ACT score with college entrance exams or applications because it was waived and the ACT wasn't available. So, now we're seeing this year and next year, probably still some GPA entrances rather than the ACT score, but it may get back to that ACT standard. They kind of had to open it up because nobody, they couldn't take the ACT during the year of COVID.
To take concurrent enrollment, our students have to have a 19 in math and a 19 in English, so if they want to take.
Going on average, we don't make it.
No.
We make a lot of.
Oh, we have a lot. This is, this is for all students. This is not just our college-bound students. It is the state test and.
I mean, when you're looking at 17, what is it, math, 17.6? I mean, that's an average score, so we, I mean, just.
Is that average? That's what I wondered.
We got a kid score of 34 composite, so, you know, we've got a lot of kids on those upper-range scores.
Couldn't remember what average was on the ACT.
36 is perfect.
36 is perfect.
So, that kind of gives you a.
Well, I know that NOCs, I think remediation, we have 65% of our students that need remediation that come in.
Total students, not Ponca City students.
Right, total. I'm just saying, in general, like, in general, all our students that are coming to NOC, there's 65% of them need remediation before.
And remember, that's one of the reasons kids go to EduCo.
Yes.
Because they know they're going to struggle a little bit academically.
Agreed.
And they get those courses under their belt and then, you know, maybe go on to a four-year.
Right.
So, we do have some makeup. Now, our kids who are successful, obviously, we do have a lot. This is our average score. We had 306 kids take the ACT. You can see that we were down 15 kids from the last time we took the ACT, which was in 1819, and the state was down just a few hundred, so.
It seems like we're trending right along the state.
So, what are we doing to try to get the English up?
Here we go.
Okay.
We're going to go ahead and do continued implementation of our 15 minutes per day of reading practice for every student to build reading stamina, and that's district-wide, that's elementary through secondary, set out 15 minutes a day. We actually implemented this two years ago, but the last two years have not been really successful as far as consistency because we didn't have all of our kids here on any given day at any given time. Now, that's improving this year. And I will tell you that we had our first district PLCs this last month, and our data looked promising for the first time in three years. So, we're seeing growth. It felt normal. Now, Reading Plus is required at Pohai for all students in their English Language Arts class, and that wasn't the case until this year. It is required in every classroom. And how often do they spend on Reading Plus, Betsy? In every ELA. In every ELA class?
Dependent on the student, the, the really nice part about reading plus is that it's adaptive and it takes the student from where they are to hopefully on or above their grade level. We have high school students who are reading on a second grade or third grade reading level. And so, they, they will have different kinds of assignments and a different length of time than a child that's doing it for enrichment because they're reading on a, um, like a sophomore reading at a 12th grade level. So, it's adaptive to the student, approximately an hour and a half, maybe two hours a week.
And the reading plus isn't aligned with a specific like theme or anything that they're doing. It's just kind of, just, it's something that's just, it could be nonfiction. It could be a narrative.
It's student-selected. They have a, a choice of, of hundreds of thousands of texts that are on their reading level.
I thought so, yeah. It's pretty interesting. I like.
And actually, that's data that we look at in our high school PLCs, our reading plus data. And we've got some work to do, but we definitely saw some growth from the beginning of the year to October. We'll meet again af, at the end of the semester and see where we are. But it's the first time we'd seen growth in a couple of years in any of our PLCs, actually, just because we couldn't get some, any consistency. Uh, reading plus is utilized at East Middle School for students enrolled in a reading class. We have one reading teacher at East Middle School and it's Kelly's brother for, as a matter of fact, Kelly's in here tonight, Stephen, um, that's his brother. And it's actually for students who are reading below grade level. And then it's also used in our ELA special education class too. So, they're used to it by the time they get to the high school. Reading plus is required for all students at West Middle School. You know, we added two, uh, reading teachers to West so that we have, it's required for all of our students. Now, we've moved to a seven-period day at, uh, West Middle School and it's not just for students who are reading below grade level at West. So, all students are required to take reading plus. This year, for the first time, we're utilizing iXL math and we're using the diagnostic assessment data to determine our areas of deficiency at the high school. It is aligned with ACT standards, iXL is. And there is an assignment of prescriptive needs for students at Poh High. And East Middle School uses iXL as well. So, good transition. They're used to it when they come to the high school and that is consistently across the board. And this is our first time to really have a true, um, programmed benchmark that aligns with our ACT. And we're seeing progress there. The pre-ACT is given to all freshmen and sophomores and we're using this data to drive our curriculum and to intervene with deficiencies. And last year, it was just freshmen, right? The pre-ACT? Oh, we didn't do anything last year, right? Previous year was just freshmen. So, we've added sophomores this year as well. And then, Betsy talked to you a little bit about the boot camp. I'm calling it a boot camp. I think it's just ACT prep within the classrooms. We do not have a designated ACT prep course. As Betsy mentioned, not all kids could work that into their schedule. So, a lot of kids were missing out. So, we have targeted ACT prep in all core classes at Poh High, specifically, uh, ELA and math for sure. And that will occur February and March of 2021. So, it will be a hard drive, hard focus on ACT prep prior to the April testing date. So, in those core classes, how much time is going to be spent just on targeted ACT prep?
Well, remember, right, we're, we are working with reading plus and iXL from the beginning of school until the end of school, okay? So, we've, we've got that long-range stuff. Um, we're going to be actually taking practice tests and taking short passages and working through them, starting in February and March, um, at least two days a week for February. And then in March, um, after spring break, it will be test prep, probably three days a week.
Okay? All, all the, the entire class period?
Yes, for the juniors.
Just for juniors, right.
In English and, and math.
Okay, any questions there?
Yeah, I've got a generic question.
Okay.
I know for a fact that there's several, quite a few, however many, and these are generic numbers, four-point students that are making 15s and 16s on the ACTs. That, that's too much discrepancy. Something isn't right. They either don't know how to take an ACT test or the classes are too easy online. I mean, you shouldn't be a four-point student with a 15 ACT score.
Well, I will tell you this, my high school valedictorian had a four-point all the way through high school and college at OBU and she made us 17 on the ACT. So, my answer to that is there's a lot of reasons why that happens. One of the reasons is that kids are not good test takers. That they struggle not with content necessarily, but they struggle with format. And that's one of the reasons we implemented this pre-ACT at the sophomore and freshman level, um, as well as more intensive practice for all of our kids on the test. Because, you know, the ACT is timed. That is a huge factor in scores. If you gave the ACT test to most kids and said, "Work on this until you're satisfied with yourself," then we would, our scores would be off, out, you know, they'd be huge, huge increase. But when you have to read under a time factor and you have to figure math under a time factor, that changes everything. So, once we teach kids how to use that time properly and how to work the test and what to expect, these are the same things that are going to be on the test every time, their scores improve. Um, another reason for that may be that they do really good homework, that they work really hard in the class. Um, and they study for those tests and they take advantage of all of our retake opportunities and our, our tutoring opportunities and they get in there and make really solid grades. Um, and they don't have that opportunity to retake on the ACT. It's one and done. I mean, you can take another test, but you can't ever redo that one. So, that's part of the factor. And I would say absolutely, there are some of our classes that the instruction needs to be elevated as well as the difficulty of the course, for sure. So, I don't think there's a one answer fits all of those situations, but it does happen. You're exactly right.
And, and I think one of the big factors is reading stamina. Um, our kids give up. They, they know it's time. They're trying to read through it. They just start marking.
So, in a nice way, you're almost saying ACT is archaic in the way they're doing it.
I'm not saying it's archaic. I'm saying it's challenging and they make it that way for a reason. It's a weeder test. They're trying to weed out the kids that are not strong enough to survive academically through college. Um, but you know, that reading, she's right, that read, that ACT test is a reading test from beginning to end for four hours. Those kids are reading. And, and that's one of the reasons we kept pushing for this reading plus and for more reading instruction and more focus on that. Because if, if our kids can't sit in an ACT test or an AP test and write and think and read for hours at a time, then they're going to struggle. And we've seen that over and over again. We're getting better.
Follow-up question for that. Um, I, I know that for the middle school and the high school, we're doing that, but in the elementary schools, are they still doing MARP?
We do the 15 minutes of uninterrupted reading time every day in every class, even if it's teacher-led, like at our pre-K or kindergarten.
Really, the elementaries would.
Probably way more than that.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they, every year, the principals go back over what MARP time should look like and monitor that through walkthroughs and formal evaluation.
Fantastic. We're getting there. And you said sophomores is next week?
Sophomores is, um, the, the 17th and 18th, yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, next week.
Okay.
And when is the freshman?
Well, okay, so, we had intended originally to do freshman and sophomore both in September and have that, that data then for the whole year that we could work with it. Um, but then COVID got crazy right at the beginning of school. And so, we were going to postpone sophomores and the juniors, or freshman and sophomore until March, early March. And then by the time we got the data back, we could use it for summer adjustment and curriculum. Um, but our sophomore deadline came up. Um, the Regents bought, Oklahoma Regents bought that test for us, paid for our district to have it. And so, their deadline is November 19th. So, we're going to do sophomores and then in March, we'll do freshman.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. So, any headway we'd made prior to COVID just took a dip. And that's probably across the state. And it is going to take a while to recover. We got to get our, we got to have our kids at school. We got to have our teachers at school and, and it has been an issue. And before, before this, um, presentation ends, we'll talk about, um, where our COVID numbers are and you can see some trends. Um, we have to have, we have to discuss this policy tonight because the student transfer policy that is due to new legislation, Senate Bill 783, and you all are very familiar with it from our OSSBA meetings and, and workshops and conference, that goes into effect January 1. And that is before our January board meeting. And by law, we have to present a policy and then allow for any public comments for 30 days and then approve, uh, a policy. So, I kind of made some tweaks to the policy that was in the packet over the weekend, just thinking this through. So, um, we'll, you have the policy in front of you, but I'm just going to give you, uh, some highlights. So, we have to ask ourselves the question, must a district accept student transfers beginning January 1, 2022? The answer is yes. And there are three reasons why we would not accept a transfer. It would be based on our capacity limits that we recommend to you and then you approve. So, they're board-approved based on discipline. If a student has a discipline issue, and this has always been state law as far as transfers, we do not have to accept a discipline issue. Or if there is an attendance issue, we don't have to accept. So, basically, what we have to do with our student transfers is follow the policy. So, um, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the policy. We have the capacity to accept the student at the grade level at the school site if the transferring student has not been disciplined for a violation of a school regulation. And when we request records, the principal will have to determine that. Possession of an intoxicating beverage, low-point beer as defined by state law, Title 37 of Oklahoma statutes, missing or stolen property, has reasonably been suspected of being taken from a student, a school employee, or the school during school activities, or possession of a dangerous weapon or controlled substance within 2,000 feet of a public school property in any event. So, those, those are the, uh, discipline issues that we can deny a transfer for. Or if the transferring student does not have a history of absence. And if we talk about a history of absence, this is based on state law, it means 10 or more absences in one semester that are not excused for like illnesses, surgeries, things like that, school business, athletic school business. So, if it's an uncalled-in absence and they have a history of 10 or more, we do not have to accept. So, there's three reasons we, we don't have to accept a transfer. If we're full in the grade level or the site, if there's a discipline issue, or if there's a history of absences. So, our principals, we talked about this this morning, are really going to have to have some processes in place whenever, uh, we get records for a transfer request. Uh, right now, we have 198 students district-wide on an open or an emergency transfer. So, when we were considering our numbers, and you guys have heard this from OSSBA, that we need to target those House Bill 1017 numbers, uh, we made sure these students were in there. We do not want to lose our open or emergency transfer students. And in fact, if they are on transfer with us now, the only way that they would be denied is for one of these reasons. However, they're going to meet the capacity because they're already in our capacity numbers as far as House Bill 1017 requirements. So, we are going to begin taking applications, and this says it, uh, in your board policy, for the next school year, starting the first Monday in March. Now, we have to start accepting transfers beginning January 1 if we have the capacity, if there's no discipline issues, or if there is no history of absences. But for the next year, we'll start accepting those March 1. And it will be timestamped because there's going to have to be one person controlling that and it will be Maureen at the Registration Center. And as those transfer requests come in, and it's not going to be our application, the State Department of Education is creating a statewide application. They haven't created it yet, but they will have it, they assure us, by, uh, January 1. Uh, it will have to be timestamped when Maureen gets that. And then when we consider that, we will consider, we won't make a decision on new transfers until after the first Monday in August, capacity data is determined. You know, we have registration all summer long. So, people aren't going to know if they're going to be able to transfer in until after that first Monday in August because we are going to have to serve our residents first. We will not, we cannot deny a resident. We just don't. We're public ed. We take all residents. This is only considering transfer requests. So, let's talk about the class size limits that are standards based on Oklahoma law. And this is House Bill 1017. And I want you to note, uh, that penalties for exceeding the class size requirements do not apply to pre-K because it's non-compulsory and are currently waived for grades 2 through 12. So, if we're not following these House Bill, House Bill 1017 guidelines, there is no penalty. Okay? So, uh, kindergarten and first grade class size requirements are mandated. We talked about this early in the year. There was some legislation in 2019, if $100 million was added to the state aid formula, that the K in 1 class size would go into effect. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that. Uh, now, here, here's some interesting info. Uh, if you're 85% bonded indebtedness, those class size limits are waived in kindergarten and first. At the beginning of the school year, we weren't 85% bonded indebtedness, but since we passed our bond election, we now are over 85%. We will probably still try to comply with these class sizes because, as you know, our board, um, set some class size goals and we'll talk about those. We did this two or three years ago. Uh, pre-K, the standard based on law is 20 students per classroom, 10 students per adult in the classroom. That's the House Bill 1017 rule. We have 22 kids in our pre-K. We started with 23. We have an assistant in every classroom. So, we are not meeting the class size requirements that are waived for pre-K. So, there's no penalty. Okay? So, we are not currently meeting that right now. In kindergarten, you have to have 20 students per teacher. This excludes your PE and music classes. This is your, your, your classroom teachers. Now, you can only have, this is kindergarten and first grade, you can have 20 in a classroom and if you have 10 additional students at a site, you have to have a new teacher. So, remember, we added a kindergarten at Woodlands at the beginning of the year and we also added, uh, a kindergarten at Garfield after the year began because we had a teacher. Was that in September? Probably September, October, we added the kindergarten teacher at Garfield to meet these requirements. We are public ed. We cannot deny one of our resident students. So, we were in trouble. We had like seven available spots left before we added those teachers and, or we would have a penalty because we weren't 85% bonded indebtedness. And that had to be by the end of the first quarter, which was fall break. So, it was just after that, that, um, the bond election passed just before fall break. But we had, we had the plan for covering that. Uh, grades 1 through 3, same thing. It's law for K in 1. For second and third grade, the mandate is waived, okay? For 4th through 6th grade, 20 students per classroom unless additional class would have fewer than 16 students. That's the statute from House Bill 1017. There is a moratorium on that statute. It's currently waived. Number one, because of the severe teacher shortage. Uh, so, those haven't been into effect. Secondary, 140 students per day, which excludes PE and music classes. That's for all secondary teachers. Now, if you'll remember, we set elementary class size goals back in 1920. And I highlighted in yellow where we are now, 2122. Um, you can see we've tried to reduce our class size by, um, one student at every grade level for every year. And we're going to try to get to the point in 2425 that we have 20 pre-katers in a room, 20 in a room in K through 3, and 23 in a classroom in 4th and 5th. And these were goals based on the data reports that the board wanted to lower our class size and we needed to. class size, and we needed to. We had some huge class sizes. So you can see, from pre-K, we're going to 23 to 20. From K through 3, 25 to 20. 4th through 5th, 28 to 23 is our goal. Now, the 2019 legislation that was acted in 2122, we had to have 20 per class in kindergarten and first grade, and up to 9 over per grade level site with a TA. So I took a snippet off of Power School just to show you. So let's take a look at Lincoln. It's the 3rd row down, and this is, these are kids that aren't in school yet. 0 stands for kindergarten. So if we look at Lincoln, we have 69 kids. We cannot take another kid at Lincoln. Even if it's a resident, we will defer them to where we have an available seat. Available list right here. So at Lincoln, we have 69 spots because we have 3 teachers. So 20 in 3 classrooms would be 60, and we can only have 9 over without adding another teacher. We do have a class size assistant in that classroom. But if you look at Garfield, we added the extra kindergarten. We had 31 kindergarteners at Garfield, and we only had 1 teacher at the beginning of the year. So we were violating law. So we had to add another kindergarten to take overflow from these sites that are totally full. So we do not have a class size assistant. We would have to enact a class size assistant if there were 41 kids at Garfield. There's 31. We do have a class size assistant at Liberty because we have over 20 in 2 classrooms. We have 22 in each classroom.
Bless you.
And you can kind of see where we're going there. Same thing with 1st grade. Here's how it stacks up. We were in big trouble with kindergarten. These are our seats available for any residents that come in, and that's not a lot to play with. We've got some room at Garfield. So Terry, our overflow list is huge in kindergarten and first.
Yes, we, our overflow list for the districts, probably 6 or 7 pages long. We have overflow students out of every school, 2 other schools, and the other bad thing is, is that we don't have as many bus routes. So that's limited where we can send students.
How does virtual fit into this?
Virtual, oh, sorry. Virtual numbers are in green. That's how many virtual kindergartners we have at each site. So they are in the total, because they can come back at any Okay, so let's talk about the capacity limits for elementary, and we presented this to curriculum committee. So for grades pre-K through 5, we had a student capacity at 20 students per classroom. And the reason we did not go with our goals up at the top is because if we accept transfers to get to those goals, we're going to be over those goals when we have residents move in. So just last week, I think we got a family of 6 at Garfield.
Yes, they actually went over in 4th grade because it was going to be near impossible to move a family of 6 to another site, because there would have been some grade level at that side that didn't have room. So we went over 1 in 4th grade.
And we won't split up siblings. I mean, it's no law. There's no moratorium. We don't get penalized unless it's K or 1. So we can go over. Those are just our goals. So when we talked about capacity limits for elementary, we set it at Oklahoma Statute 70, which is the House Bill 1017 law, which is 20 in a classroom. We will accept transfers if we have spaces available, and I'll explain that to you, up to 20 in a classroom, because we don't want residents to move in and then go above our class size goals. Or we can do this. We can say 20 in a classroom for pre-K through 3 is when we're accepting transfers, and up to 22 in a classroom for 4th and 5th. In 4th and 5th, we have our most spots available, probably because we have more virtual in 4th and 5th. That plays a factor. But if you look back here to our goal, our class size goal for 4th and 5th this year is 26. Now, we can always change the capacity limits, and I may come to the board and say, hey, we need to change our capacity limits for one reason or another, if our class sizes get too full. But I would recommend at this point, us accepting up to 20, our capacity limit is 22 in grades 4 through 5, and we maintain 20 at pre-K through 3. Questions there? Understand, we still accept residents. We're public ed. This is not for residents. This is for transfers.
What happens if the 21st student is a resident?
Then they come to us.
And what will you do with them?
They come in our classrooms. They're ours. We have to serve. That's, but see-
You exceed your limit? You don't send them to another school that's below?
We would send to another site if there was room. We try to maintain a balance, because you know, that was an issue. The reason we set these class size goals is we saw a lot of discrepancy. We might have 15 in a class at Garfield and 30 in a class at Union.
So you're really saying 24, 25, move it several years earlier with your 20, 20, and 22?
Correct. And that gives us some way to accept transfers.
To Shelley, when we accept a transfer, we wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily go where they preferred. They'd go where their room-
Correct.
So they wouldn't go to their geographic district?
Well, if they're a transfer, they're not a resident, so they don't have-
No, I don't mean transfer. I mean a resident, a move-in. If they move into Roosevelt, and Roosevelt doesn't have room, do you send them somewhere else? But you still let transfers go to Roosevelt?
No. We send transfers where there's a room.
But if they're before the person that moved in, yes.
If they've already been there.
If they've already been a transfer, that's what the policy says. They're there. Now, I can't tell you how many are elementary out of the 198. Not many. And that becomes a problem. I mean, and we've had realtors say, tell people that, oh, you'll get a transfer to Woodlands because that's where the highest resale value is. That, yeah, they need to ask us, not the realtors. So we do have a board policy that we don't do in-district transfers when our class has reached 93% capacity.
But we let existing transfers stay where they are-
Yes, and I don't-
And we will force somebody else out?
Betty, do you know how many are elementary? I should have brought that.
Uh, no, I don't.
She can probably look through that. We probably don't have very many-
Didn't sound right.
-elementary. No, oh, well, here's something to tell you. Our teachers, by state law, get to bring their kids in, and that's House Bill 1017 law. So any elementary students we have are usually teachers' kids.
I mean, I get what you're saying, but what do you do if that child that transferred enrolls right on the money, and then these people move in 3 months later? You know what I mean?
No, if a kid from Coase City transfers to wherever, and once they're established in that school, they have priority over somebody that moves-
No, I know- For the remainder of that year. Once you start in that school, you get to stay there for the remainder of the year. We're going to do that for kids. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll get to go there the next year.
They're grandfathered in. Every year, they have to reapply. Am I correct?
Not by this policy.
No, by the existing, yeah. They don't, but this one.
But if we're not meeting those capacity limits, then we can deny the transfer. They're automatically grandfathered unless they get a letter from the school board, which you would know that says one of those 3 reasons, either we're at capacity, or they're disciplined or attendance. I don't think it's going to be an issue for us. I think it's going to be an issue for the metropolitan areas like Big Speed, Glenpool, Jinx, moving around from school to school.
Policy's building in the scene to a corner if it happens.
And this policy came about, I'll tell you why. The legislators felt a lot of pressure from the governor, because the governor and the legislators felt a lot of pressure from parents. If you think about Tulsa Public and Broken Arrow, Broken Arrow fought COVID like we did last year, and Tulsa Public went into full distance learning. And governor believed that they're 10 miles apart. I, you know, it was a hard year on us because we weren't in school, but it was the right thing to do to be as much, have as much face-to-face time. As Mr. Riley mentioned, distance learning just doesn't cut it.
True.
Have as much face time as we can. Stillwater, 45 miles south of here, they were in school 16 days the first semester, last semester. We were in distance learning 11 days between Thanksgiving and Christmas, full distance learning. Now, we had kids on quarantine all the time. So that's why this policy came about.
Okay. Just so I can wrap up. Coase City kid moves in, he's grandfathered in for the next year unless he messes up one of the 3.
Or unless we're full.
Okay.
Yep.
Or we're full. But not necessarily means that he goes back to the Woodland school that he once was at, correct? He can be in our district, but not necessarily that school. So that move in-
We're going to try to accommodate the best we can.
Try to keep him in that same school.
It's the right thing to do for kids.
Correct, but, okay.
Yeah, you're almost guaranteed you're going to be in that school forever.
So little Jimmy doesn't get to go to his district because of Coase City?
We had some kids that didn't get to register on time, and it's not the kids' fault. Their parents didn't get them to register on time, and they had to go to a different school. And it is always a battle. It is always a battle.
But you end up, the kid that lives right across the street from the school doesn't get into that school because some transfer-
Unless the superintendent's overrules, and that happened this year. I mean, I had a kid that literally lived across the street from the school. He couldn't help it. His parents didn't get him there to register. They'd had a death in the family, and I overruled it, put him at the school. It was the right thing to do.
Almost under this, you have to exceed your limits.
They're a resident, so I can. I can't if they're a transfer. I can do that for a resident, but not a transfer.
Okay. Thank you. I get it.
Okay, so let's talk about capacity limits for secondary. And secondary is really, really hard to gauge because of the number of teachers and the number of electives that we have. If we tried to balance it out with our career tech kids, our orchestra kids, our athletic kids, you know, it's just not a fair balance. So we looked at our ELA teachers, our English teachers, because kids have to have English every single year, 9 through 12. There's English 1, 2, 3, 4. And obviously, we have it in 6th, 7th, and 8th. So for grades 6 through 12, we're recommending that capacity is set based on the number of ELA teachers at each grade level. So to plan for in-district growth, provide adequate staffing, and ensure that teachers do not exceed the class size limits set forth in Oklahoma Statute 70, which is House Bill 1017. The current capacity of students per grade level in grades 6 through 8 is set at 360 traditional students. So at West, we have 3 English teachers in 6th. We have 3 teams. So there's 3 English teachers on a team. We're using, well, not 3 English teachers, 3 English teachers a grade level, not a team. So if they have 140 each, that would be 420 capacity. Some schools are writing in, we don't have the space in the classroom, and we don't. We don't have the space to have 40 kids in a classroom at West. Right now, we've got anywhere from 25 to 26. There's some anomalies. There's some 16s and 18s. At 8th grade, we have 3 teams, too. Now, at the high school, we have 4 grade levels, 9 through 12. We have 10 English teachers at the high school. So we have fewer per number of grade levels at the high school than we have at East at West. So we have reduced that number to 340 students in grades 9 through 12. So here's a couple of caveats. Wildcat Academy will maintain alternative education class-size requirements, and district guidelines for admittance will be followed. 15 to 1 is our guidelines for alternative ed. So if they come in and decide, hey, I want to go to Wildcat Academy, that's not an option under the transfer. They'll have to follow the guidelines. They'll have to get on a waiting list, just like our resident students do. So Wildcat Academy members are pulled out on the numbers that you can see there. Ponca City Virtual Academy enrollment does not count in a grade level. Student count for capacity purposes. I don't know why I have that big space there, but I do.
The justification format?
Maybe. So I pulled out the Ponca City Virtual kids and the Wildcat Academies from our totals. Okay, so here are the options. This is as of November 1. Kathy Conrad does our enrollment at the 1st of every month, and we will post these on our website the 1st of every month. The law requires once a quarter, I believe it's January 1, April 1, October 1, every 3 months. To me, it changes too much. It's changed a bunch since this date, since November 1. Like I said, we got 5 or 6 kids at Garfield, 5 or 6 kids at Liberty just last week. So it's changed. So if, we calculated the number of teachers times 20 kids. So if you look at pre-kindergarten, our capacity is 220 because we have 11 pre-K teachers. Our current enrollment at the pre-K center is 213. That excludes our TSL, our Training Skills Lab. So as of this 10 seconds, and it could have changed by November 1, we have 7 transfer seats available. Kindergarten, we can't even mess with kindergarten. We have divide 320 by 20, and that's how many kindergarten teachers we have. Our current enrollment is 345. So we are over that House Bill 1017 because we can have 9 additional students per site if we have a class-size TA. So we cannot accept kindergartners. That could get us into big trouble, because then we couldn't accept our residents if we had residents move in. First grade, same thing. We have 300 spots available, and our current enrollment in 1st grade district-wide is 301, so our transfer seats available are 0. If we go 20 all the way through 5th grade, we can't accept a student anywhere except pre-K. Now, I would recommend the bottom half, Option B, for 4th and 5th, because it's still going to be several years before we get to 22. Our goal is to get to 24 eventually. So we have some, or maybe 23, in 24, 25. So this will be something that we'll need to address every year at the board meeting, because I'm not sure we'll have 11 teachers at the pre-K. Our capacity may change next year. We could have 10 teachers, or we could have 12 teachers. So it'll be something that we need to address every single year. This has to be posted on the website. What I'm going to do is, whatever the board decides to do, I'm just going to post this at the 1st of every month. And after this is approved or not approved, in December, we'll meet with Maureen, and we'll get a process and meet with our principals on the process of reviewing records on open transfers.
Explain to me, your 8th grade going to 9th grade, you're already way over.
Mm-hmm.
You can't do that. You can't have 340 as your capacity when you start with 357. There's 357 8th graders, but they become 9th graders next year.
That's why we're going to have to change it next year, probably. This is based on our current enrollment. This is the law that's been handed to us. But right now-
That isn't going to work. You're going to have to increase your capacity.
No, because they're all residents.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. You're either going to have to exceed, break the law.
We're not breaking the law, not for residents.
It's waived if it's president?
It's waived.
If it's waived if it's for residents and then you get a transfer that comes in, how are, how can you still?
It's zero. I mean, so there are no ninth graders.
It's zero capacity. Now, we're, we're going to have to look at that. If you take a look at our ninth grade, we don't have very many kids in ninth grade Wildcat Academy, but look at our number of seniors that we have. We have 236 seniors and our capacity's 340. So we can accept 96 seniors. Here's the deal, 50 of those seniors are at Wildcat Academy and 18 are virtuals. So we're talking 68 seniors.
But do you have to do it by grade or can you do it by building? Nine through 12 is collectively one set of numbers versus individual grades.
Well, we have freshmen, we went by ELA because we have freshman English, sophomore Eng-, we have English.
No, but I'm saying, can, can you meet the requirements if you do the high school nine through 12 cumulative? Because you've got a lot of capacity in the 12th grade.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't have any in the ninth grade.
We don't. And, and they're in ninth grade English together, those classes.
Will it allow you to do it by building versus by grade?
We, we could. We could, but that doesn't make sense because why would we want to take freshmen when our freshman English classes are stacked? We can't get another freshman in those classrooms. Look at Delana. Yeah. If, if we balance that, we'd be in trouble if we got a bunch of freshmen because they have to take freshman English. They can't take senior English as a freshman.
But I guess what I'm saying, does your nine through 12 have to all be 340 capacity? Why does, why does each capacity have to be the same?
Because we balanced it out. We, we have 10 English teachers, divide four grade levels by 10, that's two and a half.
Should you not do it by, based on your, your biggest classes ought to have more teachers? I mean, common sense tells you that.
We have different grade levels in different classrooms, so if a student fails an English class, they take it again.
I guess I'm just missing the value of 340 for each grade level.
Well, if we were following state law at two and a half English teachers per grade level averaging out, it, state maximum would be, well, it's not a law, there's, it's waived. It's the recommendation would be 350. So we're pushing that limit as it is at 340. Because we have a lot of space.
360 though in middle school.
That's because we have three teams per grade level and we don't have three English teachers per grade level at the high school. We have two and a half. So some teachers teach English II, some, and English III within the same day. Different, different schedules, different courses. So we don't just have one English II teacher all day long. They may teach English II, English III, AP English. But we do not have the same number of teachers at the high school that, English teachers per student that we do at.
But you don't need as many 12th grade English teachers as you do in ninth grade?
Nope, we don't. We don't. And, and the schedule's set up and, and I could bring the schedule, which I didn't, so I, I can't tell you how many sections each teacher.
You've got 100 less students in the 12th grade than you do in the ninth grade.
We do, but 50 of those are at Wildcat Academy and nearly 20 are in, are in Ponca City Virtual Academy, so 70. So I'm like, why is that? But it's 70. We'll have, we'll have over 300 graduates. And the share kids aren't in there either. So I think we maybe have 18 kids at share, seniors. So at the high school, we've got kids going all different routes, share, PCVA, Wildcat Academy. So we don't need as many English teachers because there's different routes.
Some of them probably take English as concurrent too?
Some do, yes. Now, I, I can't guarantee we'll have this many teachers next year.
Shelley, don't you smile at me like that. Are we looking at another Exodus because of retirement or?
The predictions are there were 2,600 more retirements, more retirements, not total retirements, more retirements last year than the previous year. And the prediction is based on the requests and the calculations that we'll have more than 2,600 this next year. So our class size capacity goals may, may have to, we may have to reset those goals or look at them a little bit differently. Okay, here are some notables. We, we can come back to it. So this just talks about what Robin says. Once we have approved a transfer, it will remain in effect in future years unless one of those three criteria are not met and they do not have to reapply. We let them know if we cannot accommodate. So it, it's going to change a lot because we took every transfer that came through that door. But because we have to set limits, because of this law, we have to go somewhere. State law limits the ability of a student to transfer more than two times per school year unless they are in foster care. So we're going to have some that maybe have a violation or attendance violation at one school, so that school will say, we can't accommodate you. So they'll go to another school and they may have attendance issues there and that school may say they can't accommodate you. Say they're a resident, we can't say, uh-uh, you've got attendance issues. They're ours if they're a resident. So you can transfer to two different schools and then come back to your resident school and that's going to be a, a record-keeping ordeal in and of itself. How are we going to track that? So we're really going to have to take a look at how we track how many times they're transferred. And the state may come up with something. There may be some.
Within the district?
Different districts. So let's say we have a Ponca City kid that goes to Tonka Wall. Then it doesn't work out at Tonka Wall, then they go to Blackwell. That's two times, that's two transfers. They can't go to Stillwater.
Okay, that's right.
They have to come back to their resident and we have to take them because we're public school and we take our residents. Siblings of transfers are not automatic, okay? They're subject to the capacity limits. This is required by law. Discipline and attendance. And there has to be a separate transfer application required for each sibling. And that's not our rule. There are exceptions for students in military households. If you'll remember those board policies that you all approved back in October for kids in the military, we take them. It doesn't matter if it doesn't meet our capacity limits. We take them. We take homeless students and we take foster care students, but that's always been the case. A student shall be allowed to transfer to a district in which the parent or legal guardian of the student is employed as a teacher. And this is per House Bill 1017. Now, you may have heard the superintendent at Newkirk mention at our OSSBA meeting to the legislators that they needed to rethink that for support. That wasn't part of this law. That was pulled over from House Bill 1017. That's always been law. Right now, our support employees would have, if they're, if they're not a resident, would have to complete a transfer application and they would be based on those three criteria acceptance.
This one says transfer to a district, but Ponca, or PCPS does it where if it's an elementary site, that teacher gets to take their student if.
That's what we do.
I mean, that's just best.
It's a perk for our teacher.
Yes, but a good perk.
Okay, so a lot of, a lot of people ask questions about our students who are on IEP or who may have a disability. There is already law regarding that and basically it's the same process that we're following now based on, do we have the services? Can we provide the services? Do we have the capacity limits as far as our caseloads? So nothing changes with our students with special needs. So we still follow that same process. This is what I told you that we're going to have to timestamp those applications. So we can't say, oh, this person transferred first, but we want this person. We want the fourth person. It has to be timestamped. They're on a waiting list according to the timestamp. So if we've heard anything about the student or anything like that, it doesn't matter. We take them based on the three criteria. Capacity, attendance, and discipline. So we can't pick and choose which students we take. We take them based on the timestamp. We have to post the capacity limits in January, April, June, and October, and I have no idea how we are going to post our capacity limits in June. I guess it'll be based on the previous year until we, we, we don't even have all our teachers hired in June. The state could give us some more guidance, but I am going to post those capacity limits as, at the first of every month as soon as Kathy posts those. And she does it at the first of every month. Okay, let's talk about Oklahoma Secondary Schools Activity Association rules. As of this 10 seconds, it's in the law. Any student who enrolls in a school district that is not their resident district has to stay out a period of one year for school-related athletic competition.
Does that also include being any OSSAA?
Any OSSAA activity. Orchestra. Swim. Our steppers aren't OSSAA.
No, but is choir?
Choir is. Okay, now, there is a right to an appeal. So it's similar to a discipline appeal. If the parent thinks that we did not follow our policy, they have to submit in writing an appeal, and we'll have some kind of form, to the board within 10 days. Then the board will consider the appeal at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Now, let's say they have an appeal after our agenda has been posted. You all may consider a special meeting for the appeal so that a parent is not waiting for a month. So basically, this just says the parent will submit the appeal in writing. You all will decide if we followed our policy or not. So you will have access to the discipline records, the attendance records, and you will know our capacity limits. Now, if you all decide to uphold the denial of the transfer, the parent or the guardian can then appeal to the State Board of Education. Same thing, 10 days in writing. The State Board will then review the appeal and they will check to see if we followed our policy. They're not going to make decisions on why or why not. All the appeals are about, did you follow your policy? Yes or no? If you deem we followed the policy, they can then appeal to the State Board and then the State Board has the final say if we followed our policy or not. Any questions about that? And we will, this is just, this is the first reading of it. You're not approving this tonight.
Nancy, what was the curriculum's opinion on all this?
We thought that option A was, we liked option B more than we liked option A on it. It gave us more wiggle room, I could say. If you look at the numbers.
Here, here we are, back to the numbers. Option B is the red option. That says as of today. Hey, we could lose a kindergarten te-, well, we better not. We, we could lose a third grade teacher tomorrow and I would have to bring back these numbers to you. But the policy says 20 per classroom teacher. So just our capacity could change. Oh, you're fine.
It's okay.
Are you causing trouble back there? No, I'm just kidding.
I thought it was our sound guy back there.
Just kidding. Okay. I, I tell you, we've spent a lot of time on this policy. It's something that did come about for parent choice and it had to do with COVID. And, and you know, I get it. My, my granddaughter went to Broken Arrow and I was glad she was in school every day, but 10 miles down the road, they were in distance learning. Okay, so COVID update. So any que-, you want to go back to any questions on the? Okay. So our COVID update, we were up last week, November 2nd, our risk level was 40.7. I was really surprised because it usually increases or decrease, decreases based on what we did the previous week and we had gone down 13 positives. So went up, don't know why. We were the fifth highest risk level county in the state. I will tell you that. Orange 2, haven't gotten out of orange 2. I will tell you, last week, we had more positives, so it might blow my theory out of the water, but we should go up based on what we've seen, our trends all year this next week. I'm praying it goes down, but who knows? Here's where we were at the end of the school day today, district-wide. The top graph, if you look all the way over to the right, this is students and staff. We had 69 close contacts, which is only 1.31% of all of our total staff and all of our total enrollment as of November 1. Our enrollment's increased since November 1, but I only changed those dates after the monthly enrollment comes out. We have 28 positive isolations in effect or less than half a percent. Our attendance goal is 95%, so that's still looking really, really good. Now, if you look at tomorrow, that's going to change. Look all the way to the right. We've got, it changes on any given day. We closed out 10 close contacts that come back to school tomorrow, so that drops. Now, we, we, we might not have closed out 10, we may have closed out seven and gained three or four more today. It's just a moving target is what I'm trying to say. It typically hasn't been over 2% all year long, except after we'd been in school for two to three weeks after we'd gathered together again. But our trends are going down. Now, when we went into full closure last year, those 11 days, was that last year? Yes. Between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we were at like 12%. So it was huge, huge numbers. Okay, this morning, when we came to school, I, I have, I used to do a COVID press release every Sunday. We hadn't done one the last two Sundays because we didn't have a site that had more than 5% of students or staff out. But I sent Kristy a press release last night because East Middle School and Liberty both had 5% of their students out. Okay? East has had a couple of rough weeks the last two weeks. Actually, before this morning, it was like 8 or 9%. So we had a lot returned today. Liberty, there's 13 kids out. Those four students that are in isolation had not been at school while they were symptomatic, so we did not have to do a contact trace at Liberty. We had to do two contact traces at East last week. Those nine students that are close contacts are either siblings of those kids or their mom and dad, or someone who lived in their household was a positive. They were a household, close contact. Our staff is looking really good. This morning, we only had one teacher out and that should actually be in the positive column. That was my fault. I've got it in the close contact column. Here we are today. Now, we have two teachers out. We have one at, well, I say teacher, staff member, okay? It either is a teacher or support staff. So we have one out at both Trout and Union. And look, in the morning, how many more kids from East come back? Probably by next weekend. I'm praying that we don't have more than 5% out because I'm tired of doing the weekend press release on COVID. It's been going on for two years now. Okay, here we are, the whole first semester. If you look at that last bar, it's 10:31. That was when the week began. That was on a Sunday. So we began our week. So last week, we had 20 positives and 77 close contacts. The week prior to that, you can see our close contacts and positives. And really. And really, that first, well, we, we started tracking in July 1. And the reason we track that is because kids are exempt per OSDH guidelines, not our guidelines, if they tested positive for 90 days. So we track that as well. So. There's where we are. Our trend line, we have a graph that has a trend line. It continues to decrease, so these are manageable rates. That is not manageable. And this is, this is the week that the board implemented the mask requirement in the classrooms. Now, that's something we may want to revisit at some point if we ever get out of the orange 2 level. But right now, I'm not comfortable making that recommendation with, with our county being the fifth highest. Here are our cumulative totals of contacts and cases per site. That's adding up the cases and the close contacts. And these are our schools in size. If you look at other, that includes our employees that are CMP, maintenance, that aren't out of sight. They're like in a central services, CMP, transportation, and maintenance. But something that sticks out to me is Lincoln. It's our fourth largest site and they have only had 98 kids all year affected by COVID. And we had a bunch last year. Another thing that sticks out is Trout. It's our eighth largest school and they have only had 24 kids affected by COVID all year. And for the longest, they had zero across the board. It's only been in the last few weeks that they've had positives or close contacts. Any questions there? Okay.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks. Okay, consent agenda. Motion required for the approval of the consent agenda as printed or as amended. Board members may however call a separate vote for any of these items listed. We have agenda with commentary and we also have minutes for October 11th, 2021 regular board meeting and October 25th, 2021 special board meeting. And we have contracts and agreements under $10,000. I need a motion.
Make them.
Can you hear me?
I was looking over the-
We had a couple of questions and Ryan was able to answer the question on one of the American telephone just prior to the board meeting. The additional five phone lines, we have some additional offices at some of our sites that needed phones, like our interventionist. We added the interventionist with CARES money. And then we split an instructional coach slash counselor. So we had two, two different offices, just based on our staffing.
Okay. Anybody motion?
I make a motion. Checks at the, or one, two, and three.
Okay, I need a second, please.
To vote on it.
Second.
Okay, I need a call vote, please.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
No.
Okay. Number seven, action items. Consider and take action on the following district financial reports. We're going to need a motion from A through N. It's budget amendments, budget analysis reports, bond fund reports, booster fund fundraisers, activity fundraisers, treasurer's report, and ratification or approval of payroll. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, please call a vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay. Consider and take action on setting the date, time, and location for 2022 regular board meeting. Pursuant to 2507 Section 311, prior to December 15th of every year, every board, every board must give the county clerk to which the district is principally located a list of time, date, and place of a regular meeting for coming calendar year. Regular meetings are, regular meetings are dates, board-required monthly meetings. We, we would like to continue the meetings every second Monday of the month with two exceptions. The March 2020 meetings to be held on the first Monday due to spring break. And July 20, July of 2022 meetings will be held on the third Monday due to the Fourth of July. And the meetings will still be at 6 o'clock. And if we have any questions?
Most approve.
Okay.
Second.
Vote, please.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye. Consider and take action to the following contract agreements. It's agreement with Arida Advisor for Cental, Cental on One Software. It's a, it's a Cental, it's a Arida Advisor will provide Cental One's software, which is an all-in-one antivirus, anti, anti malware and anti ransomware product. It will provide protection for our teachers' laptops, administration laptop, or desktops and servers. It's a $20,325,000 cost for our district. If we have any questions, Mr. Ryan can answer them for us.
Questions for Ryan?
Okay. Then I need-
Not live cast.
Then I need a motion, please.
No, just going to be-
I think we could probably look at all of them before we vote on them.
Do you want to go ahead and do that? Okay. Okay. Proposal for Prism of Reality for Pro High Algebra One Course Software. And it's a proposal, it's, it's an algebra course and it gives 150 student license for every year, January through December of 2022. Has teacher's guides, observation software, and training on the software and hardware. It also includes 30 virtual reality headsets, charging stations, and hardware. The total, total cost is $24,000 and the money will come out of ESR3 funds. Okay. And then we have-
I would like a separate vote on item B.
I'm sorry, Robin?
I would like a separate vote on item B.
Okay, he wants you to pull out B when we come to a vote.
I guess all we have is A and B. Unless we're going to do-
That's true.
Correct, because then the next one is four. So we need a vote or a motion for A?
Hang on just a second.
I'll move to approve A.
Second. One moment. Oh, okay, she needs us to vote. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay. Robin, you made the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Anna, I'll second.
Call for the vote. Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay, we need a motion for the Prisms of Reality, for the Algebra One Course Software.
I have a question.
Okay.
Algebra, 150 student licenses, so we're talking high school?
Yes, it's for Algebra One only. And this software company is going to be expanding to different mathematics courses. But based on our benchmarks and state testing, nationwide, our kids suffered in Algebra One. So it's a way to reach our, it's an intervention of the 20% required in our ESR3 funds to help meet our Algebra One. And we thought that could just segue right into our STEM Academy. And Delana, do you have anything else?
No. Five modules, it's modules aligned to five core elements of Algebra One for supplemental intervention. It's immersive virtual reality and both of the costs and the hardware licensing. It's a one-year pilot, so if it goes well, our Algebra One teachers are ready to try it out. If it could, go right into our STEM Academy with a map and a home.
But we wouldn't have to purchase the hardware?
Nope.
The future cost, what are we looking at for subscriptions?
Of the 20, 22,000 hardware?
The licenses are $10 per student for years.
So what's the 24,000 then if we don't have the hardware?
Well, the 22,000 is either the 30 headsets, charging stations, rechargeable batteries, the hardware. The bulk of the cost is the hardware.
And the other is $10 a student.
And the licensing for the software, including the teacher monitoring and supervision package and professional development is $10 per student for years.
Did you say that that was technology maintenance included in that?
They are rechargeable batteries. They, I would assume, well, I'm not going to make any assumptions. It doesn't say maintenance, no.
No.
Okay. So if we were to have to replace the cost of any of the equipment, that it would be a separate cost?
It would be a replacement cost, yes.
It's just a different way of learning for the, especially for kids that struggle in algebra.
I'm guessing that we'll also be looking at restructuring the budget or looking at how we're going to be pushing the budget dollars towards the STEM in such, in the future. So this is something that could-
And this is part of our 20% of our ESR funds that have to go for learning loss. And that is indicating, as Andrea said, Algebra One has taken a heavy hit in the learning loss, the foundational concept of Algebra One. That and kindergarten and first grade reading appear to be the two places we're seeing the most significant decreases.
Okay.
And this isn't the whole curriculum. They still have their curriculum aligned to ACT. This is supplemental, focused on the five core areas, but it's immersive virtual reality. The hardware is the Oculus. I think it's a high item. You're going to have a hard time finding that for your kids for Christmas. They're the Oculus immersive virtual reality and they have 30, 2 30 to 45-minute real-world applications of math for the five core foundational concepts of Algebra One.
This will help us meet that 20%, especially if we move some employees out of that 20%.
Be exciting to get kids excited about Algebra One.
Correct.
Our Algebra One teachers are pretty excited about, you know, having kids laughing or leaving out for one. You know, the big question is always, who will I use this in life? And they're seeing that. It's pretty common to situations that they will see that.
And the modules are tied to real-world relevant topics.
Yes, like exponents are, the scenario for exponents is in a large train station with one person having a virus very current and then showing the math of the exponent of the contagion of the virus. So it's a partnership. It, it is a pilot, so we're only in this from January of this year to December, or of next year, I'm sorry. And then if it's not successful, we will run it. But, but it's an MIT project and I've been in three or four web conferences with the creators and it came highly recommended at a superintendent conference. So it's, it's a pilot, but it looks to be very well researched and we'll get data from it as well. They'll share that with us.
Any more questions? Okay, I need a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
A vote, please.
Mr. Newsom? Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Nay.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay, number four.
Okay, consider and take action on donating Ponca City Public School property location in the 800 block of East Grand Avenue to the Ponca City, to the city of Ponca City. Ponca City Public Schools owns property lots 1 through 6, Block 16, Broadbowl, addition to the Pon, to City of Ponca City, K County, Oklahoma. Also known as the 800 Block East Grand Avenue. At PCPS, we'd like to donate the property to the city of Ponca City. See if we have any questions or... It's the lot, the old YMCA. There's a lot behind there, behind there. And that's what they're, that's what we're wanting to donate. So. Need a motion, please?
Move for approval.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay. Consider and take action on ratification of AIA Contract to Employ Construction Manager Rick Scott Construction Company for ongoing projects. This contract is for a bond and CARES project.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. A vote, please.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay.
Consider and take action on ratification of AIA Contract to Employ Contract Manager Kyler Construction Group for ongoing projects. This contract is for a bond and CARES project.
Second.
Okay. And vote, please.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion and vote to convey an executive session for the following purpose: to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report; to discuss negotiations; to discuss the purchase or approval of real property; and to discuss confidential conversation with board attorney considering pending claims and litigations. Motion to go to executive session?
Go move.
And then Anna, second. Vote, please.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Return to open session. Recital by board president and that minutes of executive sessions were kept by board minute clerk and will remain confidential. Okay? Consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, reassignment, and employment of personnel. And we don't have any new business?
We need to vote on that.
Oh, sorry.
So maybe-
Move for bottom 10.
Second. A vote, please.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay. And we have no new business? And-
Nope.
Motion to get out of here.
So move.
Second.
Vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.